Good evening and welcome. This is the Monday, September 18th, 2023 work session of the Salisbury City Council. Upon the adjournment of this meeting, council will convene in a special meeting. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of this building. If the doors are blocked, please exit through the doors to my right under the large monitor. The fire alarm lever will have to be pulled in order to exit. Please let us know if you need assistance. Okay, going through the agenda. Water and sewer extension, Amanda Pollak, would you please come forward?
Hi, everyone, I'm going to sit in on this on duty because I help a little bit with the documents.
So I'm going to jump into it, it's three of us tag teaming this. So just high level, we brought in Amanda Pollak, as you guys all know Amanda, as a consultant with the city to help us draft a water and sewer extension policy. She'll go into the details of what that policy looks like and the reason for the policy. But we've been working on this for several months now, looking at what our needs are, having discussions with the county as well on some of their needs. Amanda works with the county in different capacity, helping them with their sanitary districts. So she knows a little bit about the whole area, plus all of her history, working with the city in and around infrastructure development. So Amanda, I will turn it over to you and Lauren.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So the reason that I'm here to talk about a water and sewer extension policy is really to help clarify the code. There is a discussion in the code that talks about properties with public health concerns, and it's been interpreted over the years a variety of different ways. So with the county, as Andy mentioned, establishing the sanitary district and those starting to want to serve areas with failing septic systems, the city needs to have a policy in place to really protect the city's best interest and show how you want to handle these projects. So I want to first and foremost say, and I'll probably reiterate this a number of times, this is not a change for new development. New development will be handled the way it's always been handled with annexation and all the fees and everything else. This is really to address properties with public health concerns. So either failing septic systems, failed septic systems, or drinking water contamination. So keep that in mind, this is really environmentally driven. So part of why we wanted to put this in place is, again, some of these practices are already being done and have been done. So for example, the airport water main extension is probably the best example of a really large infrastructure project that pretty much followed this policy for the most part. But it wasn't written out. Where this will happen more and more and more in the future, it's in your best interest to have it written. So there's one little piece of the code that I wanted to read, just so we can all be on the same page. This policy doesn't change the code, again, it just supplements it. So the way the code is written now, it says, "The Director of Infrastructure Development shall have the authority to approve water and sewer connections to properties outside of the corporate limits of the city where water and sewer is available when the county health officer or the DOD provides a notification of the need of an immediate concern due to public health concerns." So that's really the key language there that I'll keep coming back to. We have talked to the county health officer to make sure that they're on board with this language because, again, that is in the code. But it was something that was challenging in the past to actually get the documentation that has been requested. So it's very important that going forward, we would get formal documentation from the health department to say what the public health concern is. So again, some of the drivers of doing this policy is, first and foremost, to not burden the city's resources. And then also to make sure that the applicant is responsible for implementation. And I want to touch on an example quickly that hits both of those points. Earlier this year, maybe end of last year, the Maryland Department of the Environment approached the city to serve an area outside of city limits that had drinking water contamination. And essentially, MDE was telling the city, "We need you to serve this area." Without a policy in place, and that being an area that could not do this on their own, the city took the lead and submitted a funding application to the state and was fortunate to get grant funding. But then that project now will be a city run project. So that will take city resources. The city will hire the team to design it, they will hire the contractor to build it, et cetera. So that's not the model that you necessarily want to do. It burdens city resources, even though I fully agree with serving this area and they have, you know, severe drinking water contamination, so the city's doing the right thing. But if you have a policy that says, "Hey, we're okay with this, but the burden is now on my chemical county, it's on the sanitary district, it's on someone else," then it's not burning city resources. And again, to coordinate these efforts with the newly formed county sanitary district to make sure as they're trying to serve failing septic systems, you can point them in the direction of, "Here's how we'd like that to be done." So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm going to run through some of the highlights of the policy. It defines the eligibility and talks about an application process. And I think those things alone are extremely important. Because, let me take eligibility. Over the years, the city's had a lot of questions from one parcel in a subdivision saying, "I've got a failing septic system." So yes, that parcel would be eligible, but we're recommending that you look at the entire subdivision. But that's not desirable, to serve one person here, one parcel here, one parcel here. If they're in a neighborhood of 50 parcels, then that whole area should be looked at. Because otherwise, you're just doing piecemeal extensions and it's not going to be cost effective. The application process, it was very informal previously. So now we're really looking to make that a more formal application process with an agreement as to who's doing what. And we've put one of the, you know, a sample agreement in here. So that is what we're calling the out-of-town service agreement. And it's in Exhibit A. And it really defines what type of property it is and who's responsible for doing what. It references Exhibit A, which we commonly call the donut holes within the city, but it's really the infill areas within the city limits that would kind of fill in that outside boundary. Those areas are priority areas for the city to annex. So the way the policy is written is that if you're in those areas on Exhibit A and you're contiguous to city limits, the city would still be asking you to be annexed. However, with the out-of-town service agreement, it would put off defer taxes for a certain amount of time. Because again, keeping in mind, this is not for new development, this is for people who have failing septic or drinking water contamination. So they are facing some massive new utility bills alone. Being annexed into the city and paying taxes immediately would probably be unaffordable for most of those houses. All the other properties, if they're not in those areas, they would be asked to petition for annexation when they're contiguous to city limits, as requested by the city, and when the city can provide the proper public safety, sanitation, streetlights, sidewalks, all of those things. Because again, new development, when a new development comes in, they're required to put roads to city standards, new streetlights, storm drains, everything. Where these properties, when and if they come in and get utility service, they are doing it out of a utility need. So it's not cost effective and it wouldn't be paid for, grant eligible, to upgrade their streets and put in sidewalks. And again, the city would like that when they are part of city limits. But if you think of this as, you know, step one is complete, you know, fix the environmental and public health emergency. So I'll touch on quickly, rates would be the out-of-town rates. So the rates are not established in this policy. This policy just says that you would utilize the out-of-town rates that you approve every year when you do your feet ordinance. So that could change any year. But essentially, your out-of-town sewer rates are typically twice the in-town rates, but they need to be set to cover the cost of serving with water and sewer. Another very important point is that these properties would need to pay the connection fees. So there's comprehensive connection fees, sometimes called capacity fees for water and sewer. I'm not recommending that you waive those. Those fees were redone a few years ago so that new people that tie in are paying their share of the equity in the system. And so these people are utilizing a full system, a treatment plan that's been upgraded and everything, they should pay their share. And back to the example for the grant that we applied for earlier this year, we did put the connection fees in the grant, and that is part of the grant. So we know that that could be a financial burden on some people. Depending on the level of the need, it may be that those are grant eligible. As was typical with the airport water main project, the utilities would be turned over to the city. It's always been Department of Water Works and Salisbury's preference that they own and operate and maintain the utilities, so we made that clear in here. Also, the Department of Infrastructure and Development would need to evaluate any downstream or system-wide impacts and have that be the responsibility of the applicant. So if a large area, 100 units wants to come in, but there's only a very small pumping station in that area, they need to upgrade the pumping station, upgrade the main, you know, do whatever they need to do. Again, not put a burden on the city, but then that applicant will have to apply for the proper grants and loans, et cetera, to do that work. So the applicant is responsible for all phases of implementation. The planning elements, design, permitting, construction, with the oversight of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. So they would sign off on the plans, on the permits, on the capacity, on everything. Again, pretty much exactly like the airport water main project. And then finally, one of the last things that I noted in the policy, the city has an MS4 permit for the stormwater system, and you do get credit for serving failing septic systems. So making it clear in here that these properties, since they are served by Salisbury's, which already have a permit, any credit for septic systems would go to the city Salisbury. So it's important to know. And I know this is a ton of information. And I think the way Andy wanted to do this is to present it today, get your questions, but then come back in a month and get any other questions. So not looking to advance this immediately, looking to open the dialogue and let you ponder it and ask any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
Okay, so these are the properties that have these failing septic systems. They get the priority to come in. Is the priority determined by the health department?
We are asking the health department to let us know if it's an emergency, if the surgeon, yes.
Okay. And again, say for instance, you know, it's a property in one street or another. Then the other ones may not be priority. How is, because then it's the one property, are they required then to do that one?
So from, so I'm going to give kind of both sides of the answer. From the city's point of view, your preference is we want the whole street to come in. The health department will look at it, and we've had a lot of discussions with Maryland Department of the Environment. How will they look at this? Because they're ultimately one of the agencies that will fund this. And we have a call set up soon with another one of the funding agencies. MDE has basically said, "If you can show that this area has bad soils, high groundwater, other properties with holding tanks or mound systems or failing septic, then they will classify an area without having to go and test every single septic system on the street." So it kind of will come down to that eligibility for funding. And that's really the kind of the meat of this whole problem, is how much will the state fund?
So let me ask another question about annexation. So the health department determines that this is contaminated, it's an urgent. We may need to bring the whole street in. Does each individual homeowner have the right to deny annexation? How does that work? Because then it's, because it seems like it's, it could be an all or nothing. So if we have a small development, a street?
It is kind of an all or nothing, it would be in that scenario. Because you'll be bringing everybody in rather than a singular parcel of property. So everybody would essentially sign the documents that are referenced in the agreement. So if you're inside the donut hole that we're calling it, and you're brought in, then everybody has to come in, you would have to be annexed into the city.
Didn't we discuss this some years ago, couple, a few years ago?
Well, there is, there is a sewer district that exists now inside the city, which has created all the donut holes. That's been in, boy, that's been in years.
Yeah, it's not been in.
The plan is to not go that way. It would not go to create extensions of additional sewer, water and sewer districts and stuff like that. So it seems like you still have more questions or more clarification.
Well, I'm just, my thing is the annexation, I'm just, I don't know if somebody on the block says no. Then what is that going to mean? Are they, are they going to be mandated? Is that the health department saying, is that the state saying, is that?
So Angela, let's talk about annexation just in a larger scale. Right now, and I don't see Brian in the room, but Amanda, different hat. Is, if there is a certain amount of properties that want to annex within the area, you can essentially force annexation. So it's 25% of an area that chooses to annex, then that whole area wouldn't annex, is that?
I'm not sure that said off the top of my head, but there is a mechanism for doing that. The goal with this is to make sure that the properties that are in the donut hole, that they, and are contiguous to the city, that they have to annex. The other properties that are not contiguous or that are not within the donut hole, their portion of this out-of-town service agreement is very similar to what we use right now as our pre-annexation agreement. It basically says that when you become contiguous and when the city wants you to annex, then we'll give you no risk and you have 30 days to submit a petition.
So another thing, kind of as we talk about this out loud, so there's the annexation piece, the actual annexation taxation that most people are thinking about, but it's also the infrastructure that comes with the expansion and the hookup. So that's part of the expense too. So in the scenario, if there's 50 houses on the street that want to be brought in and only 30 want it, but it's all, there's 20, like, there's a piece of expenditure that's going to be passed on to, it's either going to be fully funded by MDE, the county will figure out how to pay for it, or some of that will be passed on to the end user, the resident. That is for, we are not deciding that fact. That is for the county and the sanitary district to figure that part out. So there may be like, "Well, I can't afford to do this, I can't even afford the hookup, let alone the taxes." But that is, that is a slightly different conversation with the county and how they want to implement it. But from a connection into the city infrastructure, this is positioning ourselves to make sure that we don't have further burden or have to have further resources allocated.
So it just, to me, it puts, I'm like, kind of like Angela, it puts something between a rock and a hard place. Because if there's one person that doesn't buy into it, the others suffer.
Yeah, and just, so here's the alternative. The alternative is they just can't come in no matter what. So what's on the books right now is it's 100% annexation or you just don't get into the city. Because you just, like, there is no opportunity right now for an emergency to a level that we want to feel comfortable with.
I think part of the challenge right now is when one house in a subdivision has a failing septic, it is just unaffordable for them to run the necessary utilities to that one house. So that's, that's part of why it's like you look at it on a whole.
Whole scale, I understand.
But then, understanding your point, part of, you know, who has to hook up is going to come down to the funding levels. And a lot of the funding agencies won't run lines. Like, we're looking at USDA as a rural development program. So we're talking with them on Wednesday, and they often require everyone to hook up. You know, because they're paying for it. And some of the programs like CBDG will help fund a failing septic system. So if all that money is available, it's in everyone's best interest. Because frankly, if their neighbor's septic system has failed and somebody else in the neighborhood, you know, they're on borrowed time, probably. So a lot of it is really going to come out of the funding package. But, but again, that will be what the county is doing. You know, you all will be here saying, "Yes, sure, we'll provide you service under these terms." And then all that negotiation with property owners and how much it costs and everything else would not be something that the city's burdened with.
Any more questions?
I just noticed that a couple of these areas, I mean, that there, there's one area that's got Y High in it and that sort of thing. So I would assume that the apartments that are across the street from Y High, I guess, would also have to buy in, or would that?
Yeah, so those areas, don't look at them as the neighborhoods that I was talking about. Those, those are not, like, the whole red block doesn't have to come in. We're still looking at it as like neighborhoods with that. So those were just, those areas we're trying to represent.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the schools aren't going to get, like, you know.
Yeah, that's really not like the whole.
They're a separate entity.
Okay, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a budget amendment for six point roundabout. Mike Zimmerman.
All right, so, the plan is Mike Zimmerman, I'm the supervisor, he's in there for the structure, the government structure. Rick Baldwin is out, so we can have him on behalf. The, this budget amendment is for two things. It is for a roundabout at East Lane Street and Shurlock Street. It's a set of points that is currently, if you drove through there, very difficult intersection. Not, not safe intersection. So this is for a feasibility study for that intersection. NPO is funding $28,000, and the city is asked, they've asked the city to fund $22,000. The second piece of this is for a lot five, to investigate six locations, potential carpet contaminants along the lots. MDE has required that the city perform this work under the oil control program. The plan would include investigating, taking samples, showing monitoring level, and excavating at the six locations.
Are there any questions?
Oh, no, I just wanted to confirm, it sounds like we're being required by MDE anyway to move forward with this, correct? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
All right, any more?
I just, I'm glad to see us starting to move forward on the six points. That's a terrible intersection, as someone who lives right around the corner from it and has to go through it almost every day if I want to leave my house. So, yeah, I'm glad we're going to start moving on that.
This has been a discussion for 35 years.
Yeah, really, truly, truly.
Has it not?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it's finally, we have a visual and we're doing a study and let's, yeah, get this done. Thank you.
Just, sorry, one question, how, for the timeline for the feasibility study, how long does that typically take to complete?
I, I'm not.
Sorry, out of your scope, maybe?
I can find that out.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
This is, oh, sorry. This is to accept a grant from MDOT for roughly $80,000 to do a space for transportation in the city, for dedicated bus routes and for on-hold microtransport.
And these are reimbursement, right?
Yeah. And so one of the things specifically with this grant is, as we talk about public transportation and looking at different opportunities to get people in and around Salisbury, this is going to explore that in a little more detail, and this idea of microtransits too, which can be more to the space. So again, as we want to try to better serve Salisbury, this is maybe one of those opportunities that we'll take advantage of, seeing what we can't afford to do and what the needs are.
Hey, I love that we're exploring options, so that works for me.
Okay, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Ron Clapper, Assistant Superintendent Warner?
I'm actually Superintendent Warner.
Yeah.
So I'm here on behalf of Court Cameron and Cooney here. We're asking for additional $40,000 for the payload of raw water main extension. We found $236,000, those projects, put towards the bill. So we just need a little bit more to get this job done.
Okay, any questions? Discussion? Yeah, it is. Okay. Yeah, got it. Okay. We have a budget amendment to update position count in FY '24 budget. Andy?
Yeah, so this is a pretty straightforward budget amendment. It's still specifically with their authorized position counts. So when we were upgrading our different positions this past year, a couple of them slipped through on just a different title. So no monetary changes, just change in title. And then a couple of changes that we've seen that we wanted to make were just changes in position count in a couple of the areas. But as you can see, no new positions are being added. We just missed one of the positions in our account, the housing homelessness coordinator, but it was already funded, and there's some title changes. But since you all approved the authorized position count, you need to also approve any changes to it in this capacity, so more housekeeping.
Okay, do we have consensus, or do we have a second, the opposite?
It sounds pretty straightforward, so, yeah. Thanks, Andy.
Okay, do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, our next one, resolution requested by NAACP, Water Chemical Truth and Representation Initiative, council discussion.
So I just have a question.
Do you want to come up here?
I won't.
Thank you, Jason and Monica, for joining us. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, I have a question, let me just open up, go ahead, let me. So let me understand this, this, this is a resolution that the NAACP wrote?
NAACP and Water Chemical Truth and Representation.
Okay, so those two groups together wrote this resolution. So the city didn't write this resolution?
No.
Okay, so. Okay, hold on. Well, resolution, no, I'm just, I'm trying to talk this out loud, because this.
So for just my help, it would be nice for me to at least hear from them, the process that it took of them identifying this call. And then maybe we can find questions along the way, I think that's a great place to start.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I didn't know how it was working because it said it was legal and I didn't know if we were still to talk or not talk. But thank you for having us. So this has been something in process for a period of time, a long period of time. And this particular focus regarding the city and the movement to this firehouse, that conversation started on February. Really was before, officially was before the lynching memorial started. But as far as specifics about this firehouse, this resolution started, the conversation started back in February. We've been talking to the city back and forth for months, emails, calls, meetings, et cetera. And keep in mind that we've also been contacted by the family that was here for the ceremony that took place when they had put in the lynching memorial. They too have said, "We just want an apology." So in conjunction with what we were already, what we were doing, having planned town halls, which we already had planned for the fall, we did not anticipate that we would not have this resolved by now because we've been talking since February, more specifically to this space. So in efforts to just move things along, we decided to write something up. We have invited the city to discuss this with us. But we decided to give you a space for us to start from. This has, if anybody knows anything about me, because somebody sent me a message about, "Is this politically motivating?" I've been a registered independent my whole life. I don't give a flying fig about politics, that's not what motivates us. We're about. Um, we're about justice, we're about fairness, we're about, um, celebrating this new space, but in the right way. And, um, so, as I mentioned, between talks with the family, talks with our colleagues, um, caucus of African-American leaders, the Maryland State lynching community, all of these spaces, this is what we drafted. Um, so, considering this is a work session, um, we are open, to an extent, um, for a piece of conversation in regards to, um, worrying and things like that. James, wanna say anything?
Um, no, uh, I think you pretty much said everything you needed to say.
Thank you.
I think this is long overdue. I think this is long overdue, and, and it's something, I, I, like you guys had hoped that this would have been resolved before now, but I'm glad to see us starting to discuss this and, and talking about moving forward on it.
I can say one other quick thing, um, this, this should not be placed in a category of politics, we can't help the timing, because we didn't make the timing, we started this a long time ago. So, it's not fair to put this in a space and diminish it, diminish its significance by talking politics. Um, both our organizations are non-partisan organizations, and, um, and so it hasn't, there's no room for that. Um, I did get to have a conversation with somebody earlier who was asking me questions about the city, and I said, great, we're welcome to, we are open to dialogue. Nobody has reached out to me directly about this until today. So, I think if we're, if we're open about looking at people's specific experiences and trying to bring true joy, true healing, true moving forward, true inclusivity comprehensively, um, there's certain things that we just have to acknowledge, I can't go and build a school on a landfill and not act like the landfill's not there. Right, so, for us to move in this space and not talk about the space before we move into the space, which we tried to prevent that, but that didn't happen, so now here we are in this place where we're saying, alright, we're out of here, what we're gonna do, right, it's not fair, and it's a slap in the face and disrespectful to the families specifically.
I, I should go with that, so maybe that might, uh, uh, oftentimes people, and I will say the, the Councilman Gregory's comment that this is long overdue, it's kind of a point for the matter, it took a century for, and federal anti-lynching legislation to be passed in, um, Congress. That alone says something, that when it comes to issues that are by their nature controversial, by, by their nature are, are part of our history, but part of history we don't, do not want to talk about. The truth is not a comfortable thing, in this case, the truth of what happened here in our community is not comfortable. The truth about who was involved is not comfortable. And, I recently, I listened to a podcast today, and a phrase kind of is always sticking in my head, that history explains the present. That we cannot understand, like, you know, any of the issues surrounding us today here in Salisbury without understanding how we got here. And that goes everything from, uh, what, where things are being built now, to where schools are, to how schools were funded, to what was taught in those schools, to tell you about this area. And I will, I will agree that politics has nothing to do with this, because white supremacy is not a partisan issue. It's not, it's human rights issue, one that should matter to all of us, and that's the unity that we're losing. Not a unity that exists on silence anymore.
No, James raised a good point, so, we're all out in the community right now, we're, we're heavily engaged, and I can just say in this past week, the unity comment kind of hits home for why this is important right now. Um, I have been out door-knocking districts across the city, and I do feel that there is a fraction in the city. I know that there are several residents in the city who do not feel entirely accepted by the city, um, and I think that this is at least a small step in the right direction we could take. Now, I agree, the timing of this, I would have loved for this to have happened before we did the official move-in, um, however, what we can do right now is we can make the right choice moving forward today. So, that's just my two thoughts on, on addressing this resolution.
Well, I, I, I have no problems addressing the resolution or the content of the resolution. My concern is, or issue is, we've never had, as far as anywhere in the city's history, an outside agency or group write a resolution to us for an apolo-, for anything, really, for anything, but, I, I'm just trying to, so this, these groups wrote this resolution for the city to read.
So, and then I hear you, and I, I hear you, I hear you, you're going, wait, what, you're doing our, you know, you're telling us what to do, or you're doing a job for us, and you're saying, here.
Or better yet.
Um, but, and I, and I, I get you, the, and it's, and it was not intended to be there, that honestly, we never talked about resolutions in all the talks that we had, we just kept giving it to the city, saying, can you do something? And we're like the kid sitting on the steps, wanting my daddy's gonna pick me up and he never shows up. So, that's why we gave the resolution, because we said, well, maybe, I can't figure out the words, or maybe it's a whatever, or maybe we just need to say, listen, here's something, and, and then if you can get the picture, and then you, that's a launching pad, right? So that's a space, and as I said, we've invited, we said, we can talk, and, which I assume that this, you know, kind of this is the space, right, this work session, um, to talk about it. And so, you are, you know, it's, it's, I think it's, it's great, but there was nothing, zipping you up.
So this, you should use the word launching pad, I think that's great, this could be the, the start of a direction, and if we're talking about something with more authenticity coming from the city, I mean, they gave us a good starting point, but what more can we add with our own words from the city, might be a good touch to this.
And, and, and Councilman President, I'm sorry, President Jackson, um, has made a good point, but she says, I want an apology if it's not authentic, if it's not real, right? So, that to me speaks volumes to say, you won't, you put your DNA there because it's coming from you.
Yes, and I, I, and Monica, I did say that, and I will stand by that. If I did something wrong to you, and I don't feel convicted, I don't feel as though I should have to say, I'm sorry, or if I do say I'm sorry, it's not coming from my heart, it's not a sincere apology. So, what we need to do as a council, and as a city representatives, we need to come up with our own apology, and how we're gonna say it, and who's gonna say it, and we all have to say it. I do think that the city does owe these families an apology. I really do believe we do, it was, it was a struggle for me, and I, I, I can believe that, you may not even believe that because I am an African-American, but it was a struggle for me. It was hard, because I'm like, I'm in between like a rock and a hard place, just like I said before, I'm the only African-American on the, on the city council. Should I be the one apologize? Because I'm just apologizing because people would think, because it wasn't African-American, and they would think it wasn't sincere, but I think that we should all come up with something to say, whether it be verbatim on paper, or whether it be coming from us individually, because I feel as though this is owed to these families. This is owed to our city and the residents of our city, our constituents, whosoever, we owe this to the people. This building, the people who ran this building, this fires. They, the fire chief that gave the rope to hang one of the gentlemen, they put it, brought it from the hospital, they knew all about all of this stuff. It was wrong, and we must admit when we're wrong. We, I mean, I'm, I wasn't there, I didn't do it, I didn't, but we can apologize and pray that it never happens again. In our tenure, or in the years coming, we can pray that it never happens again. And I hope that it never happens again in my lifetime, or my children's lifetime, or my grandchildren's lifetime, because that is so horrible, heinous, and cruel for someone to have to die like that just because you don't like the color of their skin, or because you felt as though they did something wrong, why did, why wasn't it handled in a judicial system? It was wrong, and Monica, and James, I greatly apologize from my heart. I do apologize, and my apology is coming from sincere thoughts, care, love, everything, I apologize to the families of Matthew Williams, and I can't even see the other, Shalika, my eyes are, um, um, actually, Latonya Christopher, who is a descendant, Garfield King, and Ms. Jeanne Jones, descendants of Matthew Williams, and the descendants of the other family members. I sorely apologize and pray that it never happens again.
Thank you. I will say that in the end, what happens to people's hearts matters. What happens to people's hearts is insufficient. That, were we to wait until everyone was on the same page about what the right thing to do, what we would never do the right thing, that's why it took a hundred years for our government, our, our nation's government, to even say that this was a crime. That's why it's been, like, you know, seven years since we started this quest to even get these men's things acknowledged that we're just here now. And do not sell short the power of the city. And if people don't get it now, they probably won't, and will get it later, and the thing is, don't let that get short-circuited justice.
Well, what I would like to see, or talk about out loud, is that, well, I didn't even know this was even up until I saw it on the agenda when it came to us, so I didn't even know, I didn't know anything about it. So, I just, when I went through it, I was just kind of absorbing it, and of course, I read, I read, it was three times, three times, three times. And it, I am not saying or against an apology. What I would like to see us do as a council and city is table this in this regard. I feel that the re-, a resolution presented by these groups for the city to read back to the groups or to the public is contrived. I think the authenticity of an apology should come from us truly sitting down and discussing, uh, and having a unified, a unified presentation to anchor it in sincerity. Um, not that this or the words in here aren't sincere, but I don't think the city has ever had a resolution presented to the city to read, to a group, for a, for the city to apologize, and that's what, I, I, it's maybe, maybe about the process, to maybe about, maybe it doesn't seem sincere, I, I want it to be in the most respect it can be given the nature of the crimes.
Angela, that's why it was brought to the attention, that's why the, the resolution was brought here, so we could discuss it, and what we wanted to do from this day forward. It wasn't to say that we would accept this as it is, it's just to make sure that, okay, I can't make a judgment and just say, okay, we're gonna do this. I have to bring it to the body, so I bring it to the body, so we all know what we do have to do in reference to this. So, if we don't want to accept that resolution, we do have the right to write our own resolution and be sincere about it, because I think that not just myself, but I think that it should be done, and it should be done from us. And it should be, and I appreciate you two putting this together, I really do. Maybe it puts some fire up on our behinds, for real, because it needs to be done, and that's why it was brought to attention, uh, you can't keep putting off stuff, because when you put off stuff, it's just like having a sore. If you got a cut and you don't take care of it, it's gonna become a big sore, so, let's do this and get it done, and then we just rewrite our own resolution, and we sit down to the table. Us four are the next person that's coming on the council, are us five, sit down and write it with assistance of Kim being in, and the attorney being with us, and just sit down and just collaborate and put everything, pieces together, and put it together, and do it as soon as possible. I, I do believe that we owe this to those families and the men who were hung, and I do believe it was, just like I said, a heinous crime, and it was very disturbing, very disturbing, and I'm glad that I was not living back then, because I probably would still be terrified, and, 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 and there's some actuality. I can see this happening. I can actually see this happening. It's not like it didn't happen, and it's not like it hasn't happened, it happens. And it's just happened, how many years ago, fifty, twenty years, twenty, twenty-five years ago, where they, uh, drugged the boy in the car, in the truck, drug him and his body was, potty parts were all over the town, it's being done, so we've got to do something to, to let people know that we are aware of what has happened, and it just won't happen again, and we pray, because like, we can't predict the future, but we can pray and make sure it doesn't happen in our tenure.
I think I see this as, as a-
Thank you, Monica, for, um, for that, um, I, I'm not denouncing any of this, and what I would like to do is to really sit down, as, you know, I said, and look at a comprehensive approach, so it's a true apology from anybody who's interested in doing that, being that, accepting that. And I just think that it's more than this. It's more than this, and it's, and in my view, from my physical place and from my physical shoes, it doesn't give the dignity of what you're trying to do. When I saw this, because I, I didn't know anything about it until I saw an email, so, you know, a day or two, no, there's been no discussion about it. I just would rather have a true meeting with both groups, with the city council, and anyone else who would like to join to see how best and the most dignified manner to move forward.
So- If, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Monica, just get, let me make one quick point. Um, I, 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 I think that this offers a very good template, a very good backbone with which to build a resolution. I think it is, it has all the information we need, um, I, I, I really, if we want to to add our own touch to it, that's good, but, I mean, this is, this is a very, just basic overview of, of what happened and what people went through during this time, what, what the victims went through, what, you know, the families went through, and I just, I, I really wanna see us get this done, this has been going on for long enough, we've been having these discussions and, and talking about it, and we really just need to, to move forward on it and do something, if we want to, to, to reword it, if you're not comfortable with receiving it as is, that's fine, I get that, but we cannot keep kicking the can down the road, we have to get this done.
I, I agree with you, but I, I second Angela's points in the fact that if we're gonna- if we're gonna do it, we do it right the first time, and we do it authentically. And I don't want us to rush through something because we feel pressured to. It shouldn't be because of pressure, it should be because we want to. And I want this to be, like Angela mentioned, the most authentic version of anything that we could ever say to this community.
That's what I said from the very beginning. It has to be from the heart. It can't be other than, it has to be from the heart. And I'm, I'm gonna use me for a fine example. I made a statement about a prior president. I had a person write me an apology that I was supposed to read. I took the apology and tore it up. I said, "I'm not reading this, because this is not coming from my heart. This is not what I feel. So why am I gonna write something you wrote? That's how you feel. That's not how I feel." So that's what, the whole meaning of it, and brought, bringing this to the council, was for us to come up with a suggestion on how we would want to do it. I didn't want to leave anyone out, no one out. We all are a part of this, so we should all be in this discussion. And basically, everything that everybody said is the same thing. We need to take this, go in it, and put our, use our own word, our own feelings, our own words, not somebody else's, ours, how we feel.
So then what are the next steps for us then as a council? So April, what are you gonna do?
The next step is just for us to meet with our, like I just said, with our attorney, and either Kim or, um, because we can't be in the room by ourselves. And we need to sit down and we need to talk about this. We need to, to, to talk. And, um, well, I mean, we can do this without Monica, because Monica, Monica, and, and James can't tell me how I feel.
Where's the, um, how, how, where's the, where's the, where's the, where's the?
They wrote the resolution.
They wrote the, this is what I said, they wrote the resolution. But they can't tell me how to feel. They, they got the template right here. So what, what is it for us to have to go by?
I think, I think having, having them par, as part of the conversation would be good just to get feedback on, on our approach and what we do end up finally going with. They did give us the draft resolution.
So what is it, what is, what's, what's sincere about it if somebody's gotta come in and they've gotta critique what we said?
Well, they might have more information if we have questions. That might be good. I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know if it's a creep sign, okay, go ahead.
It's not, it's not to critique. It's, I'm just saying, if we have, if we need information, it would be good to have them on hand.
I, I think, I think ultimately, if we put it back in the perspective of, which we discussed about the families, right? Um, they are probably the ones you wanna get, you know, control from.
That would be great.
Um, it's not about us individuals at all. At all. You know, we're here to serve the community. So I think that's probably the space, you know, where you wanna put it. But nevertheless, um, you know, please don't sanitize this thing, is all I'm saying.
No, that's, no.
That is a disservice. That's a disservice. That's a, you know, as, you know, just, some things are just difficult conversations and some things, but it is what it is.
And, and remember also, this is not just about you as individuals, my county, my father.
That's right.
This is your, as the city.
That's right.
We're not apologizing.
And there's the county, and there's, you know, there's other things.
This is a long process.
Yes, we have other, we, we, we're gonna be having long conversations, which we invite everyone to be a part of our town halls that we're gonna be starting next month. It's an ongoing thing. It just takes a long time. We know the shore moves real slow, okay? Um, a long process to get to these spaces, but we will be following, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I assume you'd be able to put us in contact.
For the families.
For the families to put us in contact.
Yes. You can give them my contact information, and I'll submit it to them. Or you can give it, send it to our, um, city card. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.